No.
All right, Woodbury, welcome to your virtual village board meeting of March tenth, two thousand and twenty-two. At this time, I'd like to ask everyone to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence for the people of the Ukraine. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. All right, ladies and gentlemen. All right, so we have a busy agenda ahead of us. We are going to jump right in with introductory local law one of two thousand and twenty-two tax cap override. So Desiree, will you please read the notice?
Public hearing is being held to entertain public comments on introductory local law one of two thousand and twenty-two, entitled Tax Cap Override, which would override the tax levy limit for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three, established in General Municipal Law Section three dash C. The public notice was printed in the Times Herald Record on March first, two thousand and twenty-two.
Thank you, my dear. So this is normally just a formality currently the village board along with our department heads and the village clerk treasurer Desiree Poppin, are working on fiscal budget for two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three. So at this moment, I will go out to the public, anyone wishing to speak on local law one of two thousand and twenty-two tax cap override? Anyone in the public? Last call. All right. Hearing no comments from the public, at this time I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Make the motion.
Tara Burek with the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, Desiree, do you need a roll call?
For closing the hearing now.
Okay. So now, Desiree, can you read the actions that the board needs to take?
Those local law constitutes an enlisted action under secret. Proposed local law has no significant adverse environmental impacts and the Board of Trustees issues a negative declaration. The adoption of local laws in the best interest of the residents of the village of Woodbury and does hereby adopt local law one of two thousand and twenty-two, entitled Tax Cap Override, fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, and the village clerk is directed to enter said local law in the minutes of the meeting in the law book of the village of Woodbury and give due notice of the adoption to the Secretary of State of New York.
Can I now have a motion in a second to adopt or approve local law one of two thousand and twenty-two tax cap override? All right, motion by trustee Gomez, do I have a second? Second by trustee Burek. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, roll call, Desiree?
Yes. Mayor Giacamazza.
Aye.
Trustee Burek.
Aye.
Trustee Farielli.
Aye.
Trustee Gomez. Trustee Graziano.
Aye.
And the eyes have it, that's it? All right, one down, on to the next one, Orange County Community Development Grant Program for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three. Desiree, will you once again please read the notice?
Yes. A public hearing is being held to entertain public comments on possible projects to be submitted for funding through the Orange County Community Development Grant Program for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three. The public notice was printed in the Times Herald Record on March first, two thousand and twenty-two.
All right, thank you. All right, ladies and gentlemen, under the OC Community Development Grant Program, a variety of fiscal improvements are eligible for funding. So, for example, the acquisition of real property, public works, public facilities, or site improvements, code enforcement, housing and health codes, demolition rehabilitation for public use or economic development, housing rehabilitation, loan and grants, special projects for elderly and handicap, provision of public services, shelter clinics, senior nutrition, etc., and payment of non-federal shares of other grant programs, relocation of payments and assistance, etc., etc., etc. So at this time, I will go out to the public. Does anyone from the public wish to suggest a grant program or something of need that the village should be focused on with this grant?
Maria has her hand up.
Maria, go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. Being that we're moving forward with the Smith Claude area and Peroni Circle, and that we got that great grant from Senator Scoofus, can we put into the county and ask them for additional money for site improvement and also maybe fix enough, maybe we can have aid and put in additional, maybe another handicap parking spot down there, just a suggestion, you know, we have that great money and I'm, it's not going to go too far. So maybe we can enhance that, that's just one of my suggestions.
Okay, thank you, Maria, it's a good suggestion. That is something we could certainly look at. Anyone else from the public? Okay, Desiree, you're, I guess you're in the public right now.
Yeah, so I've mentioned this to the mayor several times that ever since, unfortunately, the house that burned down on Park Avenue, that lot has been vacant for a couple of years now. And I have always thought it would be a great place for a parking lot and some public restrooms for the use for Brickley Field. So those poor people that live on Adam Street don't have to have all those cars on there all the time and they can park in a nice lot with the bathroom, since there's no bathrooms there either. So that's my suggestion, if we were to hopefully acquire that.
What an excellent suggestion. All right, anyone else from the public wish to speak on this matter before I close the public hearing and turn it over to the board for their suggestions? Okay. At this moment, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Farielli, trustee Burek is hitting home runs left and right here by moving the meeting along. All those in favor, we're closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Going out to the board, any questions, comments, suggestions? With this grant.
With Desiree. I think we spoke about that. Think it's a great idea because my daughter played there several times and it's tough, especially when they say they have to go to the bathroom, those poor little girls. So I think it's a great idea.
Thank you. Anyone else from the board wish to comment?
Yeah, it says also L's will fund the acquisition of real property, some of the stuff that, you know, we're really looking for for preserving open spaces in Woodbury, which might be, you know, looked interested to look at some of that, maybe some of the smaller ones that we're looking at.
Very good. Anyone else? Okay. So Desiree, our next step, I guess, is to adopt the fair housing resolution? Okay, each of the board members, and it is online, were provided with a fair housing resolution that was provided to us and it's required by the county as presented. So at this moment, can I get a, I guess, a motion and a second to approve the fair housing resolution as provided? Just Gomez, trustee Graziano. All those in favor? Opposed? So be it. All ready, moving right along. So recently with the adoption of the moratorium came a waiver availability, which would allow those applicants to possibly waive the moratorium period for them. So the first of these public hearings will be held now, Mr. Fogel, are you here, present today?
Yes, he's on.
He's on, okay.
Yes.
So Desiree, why don't we start with you reading the public notice?
Sure. A public hearing is being held to entertain public comments to consider a request for relief from local law nine of two thousand and twenty-one, instituting a moratorium on the issuance of certain permits, certificates of occupancy and approvals for the property located at sixty-two First Avenue. The purpose of this public hearing is to provide the public with an opportunity to comment on the application whereby the property owner is alleging that it suffers unnecessary or extraordinary hardship from the continued moratorium. The public notice was printed in the Times Herald Record on March first, two thousand and twenty-two.
All right, thank you, Desiree. Mr. Fogel, do you have representation here or are you going to present your backstory on this application?
I'm, I'll represent my story on my own.
There you go. So tell us a little bit of why you are in need of this exemption.
My house burned down in April of two thousand and nineteen. And at that time, I went to inspector, Billy Code Enforcement Officer, what's his name, Gary Thomasberger?
Yep.
And he advised me that I need to redo my septic system or get an approval from engineer that it's good in order to rebuild the house. And I asked him if I have to build the same size, it can go bigger. He told me it's not a problem, it can go bigger as long as it meets the code, or it can go for a ZBA, which I went through for a ZBA, and I got approved for it. And then I went back to engineer and either for the septic design and it took him quite a while till he got, till I find, I figured out that that first engineer wasn't able to do anything. So I hired another engineer and after six months back and forth with the Health Department from the Orange County, that was in last year. I don't remember exactly the dates. Approximate during the winter of twenty twenty-one, that's when, and then April, I think it was April, he finally got a word that it's got, it's okay, the the septic system is approved, it's not a, is okay, and I should file a permit with the village of Woodbury. At that time, the village enacted a new law that have, every project has to go through a ARB process. And it took me another couple of months till I finalized all those documents and I went in front of the planning board. And in meantime, when I went from the planning board, the moratorium kicked in. And I was, and I had to wait till the, I figured that I'll wait till the moratorium ends and then June, end of January, last month, but in the meantime, I asked you to enact the new law that I should have be able to get a hardship and gladly approve that. So now in front of you asking for to be able to want to rebuild the house and get going as soon as possible.
All right, thank you, Mr. Fogel. All right, before moving on to public comment, I would like to ask the board or any of the board members if they have any questions for Mr. Fogel? Anyone at all? All right. All right, moving right along to the public, is anybody from the public wish to speak on the Fogel moratorium waiver petition? All right. All right, at this time, I will ask for, I have to close the public hearing, so I would look for a motion and a second to close the public hearing on this moratorium waiver petition? Motion Graziano, seconded by trustee Burek, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Now, now we go to the board. So I need really start with you CJ on your up and down on this waiver cure. Granted.
Well, if you, everybody remember, I, you know, that was one of the people that actually asked for us to go through the waiver process in the first place for this because we have, as I'll explain later in my board comments, while we do have a real issue, a serious issue with water in the village, the intent was to catch up to where we are and where we need to be is according to requirements of, you know, the Department of Health, not to penalize people who lost a home and can't build it and move back into their home, that was never my intention nor nor should it be the intention of the law in my opinion. So, you know, I would be in favor of this, this exception to the moratorium to get somebody back into their home, it's, that's not what I envisioned when we first put this in.
Okay. Trustee Gomez?
Fogel, is the size of the house going to be the same and the bathroom is the same?
It will be the same amount of bedrooms, but I'll add a bathroom and make it a little bigger, more spacious.
So you're adding another bathroom or is just making one bigger?
Adding, and I'm going to have three bathrooms instead of, I used to have two, now I'm going to have three.
Three, I'll see.
But the same amount of bedrooms.
Okay. Right.
And the same amount of people, we have the same family.
Same number of people?
Same number of people.
Okay.
You're good?
I'm good.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Trustee Farielli? Any questions for the applicant? Or how you would feel, how you would feel on the granting of this application?
I kind of agree with trustee Graziano. I think putting a waiver process in place was a good idea for a situation just like this. And yes, the bathroom is going to use more water. But I think he has a right to get back into his house and get it rebuilt. So I'm in favor of it.
Trustee Burek?
Same, I mean, these are, the reason the waiver request was initially suggested. I feel bad for Mr. Fogel and his family for being displaced for so long. And I am in favor of granting.
Thank you, trustee Burek, and I have to agree with, with the board as well. Mr. Fogel was kind of the inspiration with creating this waiver process. So do I need a roll call, Desiree, do I need a motion and a second to move this forward?
I'm going to refer you to Kelly because I think she has to put something together formally.
Yeah, so I would just ask if the board could make a motion authorizing drafting of their resolution consistent with your discussion this evening? And then I will have that for you at your next meeting.
Okay, so I would like to get a motion in a second to have Kelly Norton, Village Attorney Kelly Norton, draft a favorable resolution based on the board comments that we just discussed for tonight. So do I have that motion, please?
Yes.
By trustee Gomez, seconded by trustee Graziano. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so be it, moving right along. Okay, the second.
Thank you all, thank you, mayor, thank you all trustees for taking the first call of initiating the law and now for granting me the motion, I really appreciate your efforts and hopefully we'll get, move forward, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Fogel.
A good night.
Yeah.
All right, moving right along, we're our second second waiver cure petition, moratorium waiver petition is for the Woodbury Shops. Desiree, will you please read the public notice?
Yes, a public hearing is being held for the same purpose for the project known as Woodbury Shops, which is located on Center Drive. The public notice was printed in the Times Herald Record on March first, two thousand and twenty-two.
Okay. So, Mr. Haspel, I know you're here with us this evening, representing Woodbury Shops, we're going to take this one application at a time, so if you will speak on Woodbury Shops first?
Yes, Woodbury Shops is at the Woodbury Center. Because through the COVID process or the COVID problem, we lost some big tenants. And there's a change in the, the, not the use from, it's going from retail to retail. But Woodbury Shops is going to be boutique stores that were in two of the big boxes that were once there. Based upon the amendment that was entered, since Woodbury Shops is not receive its water from the village of Woodbury, it receives its water from the village of Harriman. And because there's not going to be any change, we submitted the application for the exemption and we're here now for the public meeting.
Do any board members have any questions for the applicant's representative? Trustee Graziano, trustee Burek, Farielli, Gomez, anything for the applicant?
No.
Okay. So let me start by going out to the public, anyone from the public wishing to comment on this waiver application?
I think Maria raised the hand.
Maria, did you?
Yes, it's Maria Hunter again. I'm in agreement with the applicant to move this project forward since it's a, it's a readiness established building. And as he stated, the water doesn't come from village of Woodbury, comes from the village of Harriman. So I'm in favor of this project to be approved and to move forward so that we could have some different boutiques in Woodbury, thank you.
Thank you, Maria. Anyone else from the public wishing to speak on this applicant? All right. Seeing no one else from the public wishing to speak on this, I will accept the motion to close the public hearing.
Make the motion.
All right, trustee Farielli with the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Burek with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so carried, now board members, now time for your comments on this application, whether we should grant the waiver or not, and I will start in reverse with trustee Burek.
I am in favor, I think it's, being that it's the village of Harriman, as well as the fact that it's really just going from one retail establishment to another with no difference in water usage, I see no reason not to grant it.
Trustee Farielli?
I'm also in agreement of moving it forward. The water comes from Harriman, it's not our water and you can put some boutique stuff, shops in there that can benefit all of us.
Okay, trustee Gomez?
I'm also going with it.
Okay, and trustee Graziano?
Again, this, you know, when we wrote the, did the moratorium was for a specific issue in the village of Woodbury, this being on the village of Harriman, water supply and net zero on water usage even in the aquifer system, you know, part of what we've always stood for the village board is to govern fairly and evenly and, and look at the situations and do the right thing by all of our constituents, so I think this again is another one of those times that we need to do that and approve this as well.
Okay. And I have to be in agreement as well, it, it wasn't in the spirit of the law when we created it, the water is coming from Harriman. So it has no effect on our water at all, so feeling or hearing that the board is favorable to this waiver, at this time I will ask for a motion in a second to direct attorney Kelly Norton to draft a favorable resolution for this applicant, which will be voted on our next meeting. Trustee Gomez, trustee Burek, first and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So be it. So, Mr. Haspel, I wouldn't go anywhere just yet because you are the next waiver petition, once again, for Woodbury Fresh. Desiree, will you please read the public notice?
Yes, again, this is a public hearing being held on the same issue the last two was, where it's for the project known as Woodbury Fresh located on Center Drive, and the public notice was also printed in the Times Herald Record on March first, two thousand and twenty-two.
All right. Mr. Haspel? Once again, will you just talk to us about the project?
Sure, in consideration of, I will say this is pretty much of a carbon copy of the last one. It also is part of the Woodbury Center Shopping Center, which receives all of this water, all of the shops in the Woodbury Center receive all of its water from, from the village of Harriman. And for the same reasons that you just approved shops, we would ask that you approve fresh.
Okay. Going out to the board members, once again, does anyone have any questions for the Woodbury Fresh representative?
I also should say it's a supermarket, it's I didn't indicate what the purpose of the, the change in the nature. It was the old Modells and it will be a supermarket.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any questions for the applicant?
The supermarket's going in Modells, I thought that was the boutiques.
Do I have it backwards?
I think it's the forever twenty-one space is the Woodbury Fresh, right? Okay.
I got it backwards.
I'm sorry, no, I just want to make sure I'm not going crazy.
I have, my one question is, is there seems to be an increase in use for the, for this trade-off on this site, so I would like to get a kind of a confirmation on that. How much of an increase in use is, is this going to be on the water system?
I would defer to the engineers who are not here, but we did supply the planning board with all information with respect to that issue. And again, I don't feel like I'm the competent person to ask, I would ask the, the village engineer who has all that information already.
Trustee Gomez, any questions? Okay.
The water and oil is still going to come from Harriman, correct?
It all comes from Harriman.
All right, I'm good, thank you.
And trustee Farielli, anything?
No, no questions, again, I would just want to make sure the water was coming from Harriman.
Okay. Okay, moving right along to public comment, anyone from the public wishing to speak on this waiver petition?
It's Maria again, I'm in favor of this, as long as Harriman has the water to support this and we can use the revenue and another food place in Woodbury, so I look forward to it.
Just for the, what's purpose, we were asked to supply a letter from the village indicating that they have the water and they will continue to supply and we did that.
Anyone from the public wishing to comment, any other further comments, I should say? All right, hearing done, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Make that motion.
Trustee Farielli, trustee Burek, once again with the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. So moving on to board member comments on this application, so starting now with trustee Graziano once again?
Well, I'm a little concerned that this, our engineers have claimed that this is going to have a small increase in water use. That being said, it is on the village of Harriman's water supply and our issue with water is supply, it's not the availability of supply in the area, it's the supply we have available to pump, so to me, there's two different issues there and I don't want to conflict the two. So, once again, being on the Harriman supply and they've made it clear that they have the ability to supply this, I would be in favor.
Okay, trustee Gomez?
In favor.
Okay, trustee Farielli?
I'm also in favor for a lot of the same reasons as the previous application, the water comes from Harriman. They have a letter saying they can, they can handle it, so I'm good, I'm in favor.
And trustee Burek?
Same, I'm in favor.
Okay, once again, this is really, it really is carbon copy of the last application, water is coming from Harriman. It really makes no sense for us to apply the moratorium to this applicant, so hearing that the board is in favor of this waiver, I would like a motion in a second to direct attorney, attorney Kelly Norton to draw up a favorable resolution and we will vote on it at the next meeting. So do I have that motion?
Make that motion.
Trustee Gomez, trustee Burek with the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. So be it.
Thank you, I have a housekeeping question.
Sure.
The board has effectively approved our application subject to this. I was just wondering if Kelly or the, the village board is going to transmit it directly to the planning board, or is that something that has to be shepherded by me?
So the resolution hasn't been adopted yet, it'll be adopted at the board's next meeting and after that you can request to be put back in the planning board queue because I think, I think both projects are in line for resolutions, or maybe, maybe one of the two is, so once you get it, then we'll work with Desiree to make sure that the chairman of the planning board is aware that the resolution has been issued, if that was. Okay.
We appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Haspel.
Thank you.
All right. Moving right along, public comment on agenda items only, so this gives the public an opportunity to speak on anything that is currently on this evening's agenda, so I will ask the public if anybody wishes to speak on any of those items?
Maria?
Maria?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Raise a hand. So.
I just had a couple of things, the letter that you received from for the renovation on Adam Street?
Yep.
From your company out of Poughkeepsie there? Was it Liscum, McCormack and Ben Forest?
Yes.
I just know that there's, there was a typo in the second paragraph, I'm, I know, I know the village clerk has recognized it, but I don't know if anyone else who says the town, but it really should be the village before you sign that.
Yeah.
And then, um, this, this forty-six thousand dollar fee that they quoted, that's only to put the proposal, I guess, out again, right?
It's the design cost and then to basically administer the bid process from there.
For the bid process.
Yeah.
And I just you know, I'm all for for the building department to have a new place to to reside in. But this is like the second time we're going out in the bid process. And I know when the bids came in, they were a little high. I just hope that something can be done so that doesn't keep costing us money over and over again. It seems like we're throwing good money after bed. And it's not our fault or your fault. It's the way the economy is and how the bids are coming in. I'm just concerned about the money that keeps being spent and we can't get decent bids in. So I just hope that something can be worked out with that. And that's then the other thing is on your other agenda item. These appraisal services seem to total about 18. No, wrong number. Sorry, I was looking at something else. I understand that there's three different properties, the property of 24 Smith's Claude, 53 Park Avenue, which is vacant land and 34 Hazard Lane. Hazard Lane and the Park Avenue, I'm sure you're all aware that they do have wetlands involved in it. And I just hope that the projects that the one project that Ms. Potvin mentioned before with the with the grant. I like that idea because I because I kind of did my research where the property was. And if that's the property and that's the case, and move forward with that, maybe we can get money from, as Mr. Graziano suggested, from the county in purchasing and helping us keep our taxes down in that respect. On the property at Hazard Lane, I have really no idea what you plan on doing with that. But that is something that I'd be concerned with increased traffic, but if it's something that's going to be kept within the village, then so be it. Because it is, like I said, wetland. So before you with these appraisals for, I'm presuming appraisals are being done for purchasing. That's my presumption. And if that's the case, just be aware of the wetlands situation back there because it does flood. And that's all I have to say about all of those right now.
Thank you, Maria. So we with in terms of the Osweiler Building, so when the numbers did come in, they were high, of course, this was the height of the pandemic and the cost of goods was through the roof. So where what we're looking at is a fresh set of eyes on both from our new building inspector and the new architect that will hopefully maybe look at things in a different way and maybe eliminate items that we don't need to move forward with. In terms of the appraisal process, the we are aware of the wetlands on Park Avenue. Village clerk Potvin's suggestion for that is not only liked by us, but it's also liked by the town supervisor. So we're looking at 53 Park as a usable parcel for us. This board, as you know, has been very much pro land preservation and whatnot. So this Hazard Lane gives us that opportunity to move forward with that part of our agenda. So hopefully that answers everything for you. So moving other, thank you, Maria. So any other public comment on agenda items only? Okay. Moving right along. Okay. Can I please have a motion? I will get to administrative business. Can I please have a motion and a second to accept the minutes of the meeting held on February 24, 2022?
I'll make the motion.
Graziano with the motion, trustee Ferrelli with the second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Approval of abstract. Desiree, will you please read the abstract?
Yes, this is abstract 18. It contains vouchers 211696 to 211798 and totals $950,280.90.
All right, thank you, Desiree. Can I please have a motion to accept the abstract as read?
Make the motion.
All right, trustee Buick with the motion, trustee second by trustee Ferrelli? Yep, all those in favor? Any opposed? All righty, moving right along to fire department equipment requests. Can I have a motion in a second to approve fire department equipment request? Five of 2022 totaling approximately $16,650.50 for the purchase of three radios for the officers.
I'll make.
All right, trustee Graziano with the motion, trustee Buick with the second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Nay. Okay, all business appointment to the revitalization committee. This item I will table to our next meeting. So we're going to move right along to new business. Okay, all right, I need a motion and accept a second to authorize me, the mayor, to sign a proposal from Sterling Appraisals to have the following properties appraised. 24 Smith Claude Road at a cost of $2850, 53 Park Avenue at $2750, and 34 Hazard Lane at $3,250.
Make the motion.
Thank you, trustee Buick. And second by trustee Ferrelli. Did we lose in this? All those, any discussion on the matter? No? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, moving right along. So I need another authorization by the board to the mayor to sign the proposal from Lixum McCormick and Van Voorhees. No relation to the Friday, the 13th Van Voorhees. To update, revise, simplify where possible, the big plans that were done by a different consultant for the renovation of the former Osweiler Building at 19 Adam Street. This building will be used for building department to house their offices, bathrooms, break rooms, and all kinds of records. So engineering design, the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing services, all are part of this of this package totaling $46,000. So at this time, do I have a motion and a second?
Motion.
Motion by trustee Graziano, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Buick. Do I have any discussion or questions on this?
Your consultant is here, by the way, if you do have any.
Yes. Anything for anybody.
What's the timeframe?
Who is on?
Richard, I think, is on, right?
Richard?
Raymond.
There you go.
That's what I said.
Everyone loves Raymond. Yep. Yeah, no relation to Friday 13th Van Voorhees, that's correct.
That's good.
And I did get that comment about the I apologize for that typo on the second paragraph, second sentence about the one. I got it right about six times, but I did have one typo put in town versus village, so I will correct that. Yeah, basically, we are just real quick, we are going to do what you said, Mr. Mayor. Do the best we can to minimize the the cost and simplify the building that you've done, you know, in the past go around. So, you know, we talked about simplifying that one bathroom, possibly in the main entrance, and looking at certainly the HVC system as three certainly alternative ways to save some money. So our answer on the question from timeframe is we'll go as quick as we can. You know, we've we met with the billing inspector already. We have some base drawings started as well as just a we took a little chance, but we started some base drawings because I know when we met with the mayor and trustee and the bill bill inspector, they're anxious to get going. So go as quick as we can. I'll work on a schedule next and submit that to everyone.
Okay, does anybody have any questions for Ray since he's here?
He just asked my question.
Yep, okay, any other any other questions? Okay, no other questions from the board. We have a motion and a second. Can I get it all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? So be it. Ray, you got your marching orders?
Okay, thank you very much. We appreciate it. We're marching.
You got it. Thank you for coming tonight.
Aye.
Got it. Bye bye.
Okay, last item under new business. Exemption from taxation request from the village of Curious Joel. Request has been received from Daniel Hubbell, attorney representing the village of Curious Joel, requesting the village board consider an application for exemption from taxation on certain properties used for water supply purposes that are owned by the village of Curious Joel in the village of Woodbury. This request has been received in previous years, as was discussed on March 11th in 2021. At the time, the board denied that request citing the reason for this denial is that the village of Curious Joel have acquired this property or required property within their own village through negotiation or eminent domain to locate their water supply facilities on those sites, but chose instead to allow such lands to be developed for residential and commercial purposes to benefit the Curious Joel tax base. So how does the board wish for us to proceed, proceed, I should say? Grant the exemption or deny the exemption? Starting with trustee Graziano.
It would be a deny. That's kind of the normal protocol.
Trustee Buick?
My feelings haven't changed since last year.
Okay.
They had the available land in Curious Joel that should have purchased just there because it hurts our taxpayers.
Yes. Trustee Gomez?
I agree.
Trustee?
Yep.
I'm also in agreement.
Okay, agreement to deny.
To deny, correct.
There you go. Okay, so can I have a motion and a second to deny the request received from the village of Curious Joel?
Make the motion.
Motion by trustee Graziano, seconded by trustee Ferrelli. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So be it. All right, that concludes regular business, public hearings and whatnot. So now we go out to the public comment on any items at all. So you could just start speaking at this point.
Come on, Maria, you're gonna go four for four.
Come on, Maria.
Have a good night, everybody.
Happy St. Patrick's Day.
What's on St. Patrick's Day, Desiree?
Maria and Bob's anniversary.
Congratulations.
Happy anniversary. What year is it?
Forty-three years.
Wow.
Wow.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. My bless.
Forty-three, forty-three, yes.
I bless you guys.
Thank you.
How you've put up with that Bob Hunter for this long, I will never know. All right, anyone else from the public wishing to speak? All right, hearing no other comments from the board, I will go out to the department heads, starting with Mike Pennella.
Good evening to all. No comment tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, Rob Lyon, highway superintendent.
No comment. Thank you.
You you prepared for the big storm this weekend?
Yes, we are.
There's another one?
Yeah.
Yep.
We have enough fall run.
Sunday. So Mickey Phillips, water and wastewater.
I got nothing tonight, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Sir, not seeing Chris Burke here, I could skip right over Chief Burke.
He was here.
He was. Yeah. Village clerk Desiree Poppen.
Yeah, just Mickey, start making that Irish soda bread we talked about earlier that you weren't here for. And I just want to say, the past two days, the village, individual village trustees, one on one, have been working with the departments to shave the budget a little bit before our big work session next Tuesday at seven o'clock, which will be live in Village Hall. And I want to say it was very impressive and I was taken back by how well prepared all of you were and how knowledgeable you were about the budgets that you guys were there to discuss. And I thank you for making the process this week very easy with CJ, the water usually takes three to four hours. We were done in two and a half.
No surprise.
I know, Jesus, the fire usually takes two. We were done in an hour and 20. Vic, the building department usually takes 45 minutes. We went almost an hour, but that's okay. It was your first one. And Tara.
Has nothing to do with his first one.
And Tara, the highway department went smoothly. But, you know, as we are obligated to say, because Rob Lyon's just amazing, so.
He came with labeled folders. Come on.
Label flowers, folders and roses and whatnot.
He's got a five year plan.
Every number, let me tell you, every number I questioned, he knew. I haven't answered. It was very.
I have a PowerPoint for that. But I also think the department heads need to be recognized as well because they each work hard to give you not a budget containing bluff. They justify every penny. So when it does come to this work session, it's going to be really hard to whittle it down any further. But it's going to be an effort next week. So I'll it'll be fun. Make sure you bring pizza.
The broom.
Okay, thank you, Clerk Potvin. Let's start with board member comments, starting at the top of the key with trustee Graziano.
All right, well, good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming. The last few meetings, I've been briefing my comments, but that's going to change tonight. So settle back. First off, I'm happy to see that we finally getting into this endemic phase of COVID-19 and things are beginning to trend back towards normalcy a little bit, and I'm really happy to see that. And I look forward to starting our in-person meetings once again and interacting with people on a personal level. So I'm really glad that we're going to start doing that again. I'd also like to thank Mickey and his team as well. They've done a great job putting together a a great budget that, you know, really reflects what we need to do to, you know, to proactively invest in our water system and working with our consultants. We've got a plan and they're putting that plan into place and there'll be more to come on that. But they did a great job putting that together and putting that plan forward. So I want to thank you and your team, Mickey. Next off is, you know, when Tara and I ran for first ran for office three years ago, we made four fundamental promises to people of Woodbury. To be honest, transparent, and govern fairly, no matter how unpopular some of those decisions may be, to look at our water and wastewater infrastructure and make sure that it's adequate and sustainable for the future of our community, to preserve land and protect open spaces that made up the feel of Woodbury, and to do our best to open communications and repair relationships with our town board. We have followed these four tenants throughout our terms and have never wavered from them. No matter the situation, no matter who thinks they're influential, we have stayed true to the promises we have made to citizens of Woodbury. Unfortunately, it seems we have some who feel they are special and don't need to follow the rules that everyone else does. We have those who feel that code shouldn't apply to them or they do favors for some reason. Well, I'm here tonight to tell you that as long as I occupy a seat on this board, I owe no one any favors. Everyone will be treated equally. As I said three years ago, and I repeat it again, I cannot be bought, and I certainly do not respond well to juvenile behavior when people do not get their way. If you want to apply or build something, do it within the rules and codes that govern our citizens equally. Threatening to sell to XYZ or preying on people's fears with mistruths when you don't get your way is tantamount to a grade school child taking his ball and going home because he wasn't picked first to bat. Tantrums and fear mongering are not only unprofessional, they are unbecoming and narcissistic. If someone uses selling as a threat, my reaction is go ahead. You're obviously more concerned with your own personal issues than the actual community at large. In fact, to be honest, I will help interview real estate agents and moving companies, so that'll help you move faster. Large mouths and closed minds are a dangerous combination in this country, and unfortunately, we seem to have an overabundance of them lately. We, as a community, have a water issue. That is an indisputable fact. That may be not a popular item or disclosure for some, but it is the truth nonetheless. We, as a board, are working with our water department to address these issues as fast as possible. Unfortunately, these are issues that are over a decade in the making. They cannot be reversed overnight. The problems are real, the solutions are tangible, and the moratorium continues to be necessary. I wrote back in 2019 that I felt we needed to take a look at where our infrastructure was and what, and that is what we have done. We have not relied on feelings. We have not relied on anecdotal hearsay. We have done it with science and we've done it with data. We have commissioned reports, looked at supply, looked at the aqueduct health, and come up with a plan to make the necessary investments that will ensure our water supply is sustainable in the future. That is the transparency we promised, and that is the expertise that I have offered to help bring to this community. Continuing in the vein in the vein of keeping promises and transparency, we have also formed a committee to take a real good look at land preservation and to save our open spaces and summon the bucolic nature that made Woodbury the choice for so many families to call home. If you remember back in September of 2019, while running for office, we did openly state as part of our platform, while growth is not inherently a bad thing, growth without a solid plan can cause chaos. while growth is not inherently a bad thing, growth without a solid plan can cause chaos. Water and sewer capacities need to be verified, open space preservation needs to be prioritized, and the character of our community needs to be protected. Not every acre of available land in our village needs to be built upon. Existing open spaces and historical lands need to be celebrated, preserved, and protected by any potential overdevelopment. We need to take a hard look and ask ourselves if our current capacities are adequate. Growth without a forward-looking strategy or sustainable infrastructure is not responsible. We pledge to look closely at these issues, even if it requires calling for a building moratorium in order to develop a responsible plan to move Woodbury forward. We made that promise then, and we are delivering on it now, plain, simple, and transparently. Every community needs a proper mix of commercial and residential properties to prosper, and we are committed to maintaining that balance. We will do it fairly and within our code, governing evenly for all. That is what we owe to our residents. Going around in a small community insulting and denigrating our board behind our backs not only makes people look petty, it only serves to jeopardize the progress that has been made. No one is special, no one is above the law, and no one, and that is a fact. We welcome ideas, we welcome suggestions, and we will welcome dialogue, but we do not welcome threats, tantrum, or cajole. We may not always agree with on the end, but we will do it professionally and with dignity, and we expect the same in return. I would like to close with something I said before, but it really bears repeating. The ugliness and pettiness and the anger need to end, plain and simple. It is not productive, nor does it solve any of the myriad of issues our community faces. Being bitter and looking to hold on to archaic ideas and platforms will not solve future problems. Being at each other's throats will only lead to the downfall of our community and most definitely will not save Woodbury. We need people with the vision to solve the problems of tomorrow. We need a fresh perspective, open minds, and most of all, open hearts for our neighbors. We need to work together to move Woodbury forward and work together to ensure our future is bright. Egos need to be checked at the door and strife only serve to divide. The fighting will only tear us further apart when we need to come together the most. Be a part of the solution to help secure our future and move our community forward. Do not be part of the problem. Good night, be well, and I look forward to seeing you all in person in two weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. Very well said, trustee Graziano. Trustee Gomez?
We're gonna say some of the stuff he said, but he got it all covered. What do I say now? Thanks, CJ. I just want to say.
Hey, it's worth repeating. If you want to repeat it, go ahead.
Um.
And he's frozen. Like, like it wasn't planned.
Yep.
Okay, trustee Furelli, he'll come back when he's ready. There he is.
Well, okay, I was gonna talk about St. Patrick's Day and how I can make these lists for soda bread that I keep, you know, that's so good. But I'm more concerned with what's going on in the Ukraine right now. And watching the news clips come back and forth all day long of what's going on and the innocent people that are dying. And I just want everybody just to take a moment or two during the day and just think about what's going on over there and and make some of the stuff that we have that we complain about here right now kind of petty. And that's really why I have to say, just to keep those people in your thoughts and prayers.
Thank you, trustee Furelli. Going back to trustee Gomez, are you unfrozen at this time? It's hard to tell.
He was.
No, I think he's okay.
He's fooling around now.
Is he, is he playing games?
I don't think so.
No.
Okay, trustee Buick?
Thank you. Just want to echo trustee Furelli's comments. Everything that's going on in the world, it really gives us perspective here. And there's a lot of, I think, pettiness that goes on and the things that we, we hear. And when you look at, read the news, watch the news, if you don't watch the news, just listen to your friends. I'm sure everybody has family or relatives in Europe. It's scary what's going on and it's my, my heart goes out to those families affected by this, especially the, the innocent children that we're seeing in the hospitals. I, it's devastating. So thank you for acknowledging that, Vic. As I think many are aware, this month is, this is my, I'm the woman on the board, so I have to talk about this. Women's History Month. We just celebrated on March 8th International Women's Day, and every year, there is a global theme. This year's theme is Break the Bias. So you might see people posting pictures with their hands crossed and a lot of people on social media are taking, it's become, over the last five years, it's really taken off these campaigns just to raise awareness to women's issues and the things that we face every day. So whether it's deliberate or it's unconscious, bias makes it very difficult for women to move ahead. And the first step is knowing that bias exists, but that's not enough. So action is needed to level the playing field for all genders. So International Women's Day, which was on Tuesday, is a global day of celebrating the social, economic, cultural, and political achievements of women. It's, it's a day that call, it's a call to action for accelerating gender parity. So even though it looks like, as CJ said, we're in the endemic of COVID, women are still very much, very impacted by the pandemic in profound ways professionally, which only highlights the inequities we face every day, mainly in the workplace. It's, it's absolutely fundamental that women, that diverse women's voices and experiences be incorporated into the national and global recovery plans to address these inequalities. This month in particular, I look to many of the men that I am friendly with and close with and my relatives. And I try to empower them to empower women in their lives, whether it's their wives, mothers, daughters, sisters, friends, coworkers. Show them through actions that their perspectives matter and that they are valued. I always tell those of my friends that have sons, teach your sons early about celebrating women's achievements and raising awareness against gender bias. So when you, when they're of age and they're making the decisions in the world, whether man or woman, doesn't matter, won't see gender. And finally, it's, it's to take action for equality. So as I said earlier, raising awareness is step one, and just taking action today will ensure that our children, our children inherit a more balanced and equal world. I'd also like to take for a minute, a minute to acknowledge my husband for all that he does in my home with our children, and he allows me to do many things that many women aren't able to do. I flourish professionally because of him, and I owe a lot to him, my success, my success to him. I couldn't do what I do without him supporting me and taking on more of a responsibility at home than most men have traditionally done. And I just have to say, the world needs more men like him in order for women to gain true equality. So thank you all again for listening and for attending this evening. Stay safe and have a nice evening.
Thank you, trustee Buick. Trustee Gomez, do you want to return?
Is he here?
Yeah, he's here and he's. Camera. Turn off your camera and see if that helps at all.
I don't know. It looks like he's sleeping.
Now he's frozen.
No, he's frozen.
All right, we'll come back to.
He's just really sitting still to make it look like he's frozen.
There he is. He's back. Go ahead. And he's frozen.
No, he's just, just.
He's all, we like that smile. Just leave it there. Look at that beautiful smile. We just leave it there.
Make his comments in writing.
Yeah. All right, so my comments may be as long as trustee Graziano's. You guys have caught a break with me the last few meetings, but now I'll get my revenge. So let me begin tonight by thanking our department heads, our trustees, and village clerk Potvin for beginning the most arduous tasks, our annual budget process. On Tuesday evening, the village will be hosting a public work session to review the fiscal budget for this upcoming year. As stated, this is open to the public without comment from the public. Will also be taped and viewable via the YouTube channel for Woodbury. So either come and join us, but bring pastries. So, second on my list. The village has experienced many changes over the last few years. No change will have greater impact than the loss of Rick Golden as our attorney. Rick has served countless years as the attorney to the village and the planning board, always protecting the best interests of Woodbury. Most important for me has been the relationship that Rick and Planning Board Chairman Chris Gerver have developed. Not only is Chris Gerver a friend, but I consider him family. To watch how Chairman Gerver has grown into the job, how comfortable he has been as chairman is a testament to the close working relationship that the two have developed, the trust they have in one another, their collaboration, the collaboration they have formed. On behalf of our building department, our clerks, and your village board, I wish Rick Golden all the best in his future endeavors, and the door is always open for your return. So thank you, Rick. And finally. So nobody said this job would be easy, and after two and a half months in office, I can completely agree. People expect a lot of you. I get it. For me, if, for me, if you are a resident and you have the dangling cable line, raccoons under your desk, questions about a bridge outage or a troublesome light bulb, then I'm your guy. If you are a developer and you wish to have me create overlay districts for you, change zoning codes or spot zoning, request placement on a planning board agenda, or circumvent my consultants, I would suggest you either find somebody to run against me or choose another municipality to build in. I do not work for you. I am here to protect the best interests of our residents. I will take a meeting with you, one meeting, then you are on your own. You will hire your consultants, you will submit your plans, and you will keep your fingers crossed that everything goes well. You will never hear from me, okay? You will never hear the word ratables or the phrase, "I, I would hate to lose this project to another municipality." Let me say this. If the zoning code allows for your development, then this board, nor I, will get in your way. You will legally, you are legally about to proceed with your project. Congratulations. If not, the times of pre-op meetings and bending over backwards is long gone. A few other things you will never hear from me. I will also not listen to fear-mongering against members of my community, XYZ, if you want to call it that. Nor will I allow you to say this planning board is horrible. These are a group of volunteers performing a task that very few people in Woodbury would even think to apply for or have never, have no understanding of what they do on a monthly basis. This is six hours a month, probably, just in meeting time, and that doesn't include the preparation for that meeting. I will also not announce upcoming projects coming to Woodbury without it first going through the planning board stage, ZVA or building department. I am trying not to, I am trying to make this statement not to alleviate any complaints. You may have with me, what I'm trying to do is to get you to stop calling me. Period. Thank you, and have a good night. With that said, I will, with no further business, I will entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Make the motion.
Graziano, trustee Buick with the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Jesus looks like he's in favor.
Hey, Jesus, play twice if you're in favor.
He did.
Yeah, there we go. All right, ladies and gentlemen, our next meeting will be held on March 24th. And guess what? It will be in person at Village Hall. So it will be nice to see everybody's faces without them being blacked out and whatnot. So with that said, I want to thank you all for joining us tonight, and Woodbury, have a good night. Stay safe. Take care. Arrivederci.